Please call the board.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
And I believe Councilmember Barry should be here shortly. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Clay.
I would like to welcome the newest member of Ward Two to Tacoma Park. And she's born at 8:22 this morning, and her name is Sophia Clay.
Oh.
Hey.
Wow.
Well, she's not mine. My niece, my nephew had a baby, so. Well, his wife had a baby. Anyway.
So you get the joy without the headache.
That's right. We've got to go over to the hospital, pick up the baby, cuddle and coo, hand it back and leave. Great.
Go to sleep.
Thank you.
And like to welcome back Councilmember Sniffer, who has been resting and recuperating and is back with us and going to try and make it through the whole meeting, although may need to stand at some point. And if he does need to stand, we'll all stand with him and take a little break and do deep knee bends and get right back going again. Councilmember Sniffer.
Well, thank you. I am glad to be back. For those of you who don't know, I had a, they call it an accident. I was, for a while, riding my bicycle out near Bowie, and she wasn't going very fast, but she was talking on a cellphone. And so I've become extra sensitive about people talking on cellphones since I've been laid up for weeks and have many more weeks to go. I really urge people, get a cellphone call. Please just pull over to the side, you know. You can take 30 seconds to pull off the road and then answer the phone, or maybe ignore it altogether, but that's what, and I'm, you know, I have in fact answered the phone while driving on occasion, so I'm guilty of the same thing, and I understand how that can happen. I also want to thank everyone who was so nice to me for the past, coming on almost six weeks here, five and a half weeks. I had just tons of well wishing, people wishing me good thoughts, dropping things off, books, visits, whatever. It was very sweet. And I appreciate that, and I want to give a special thanks to our sound guy who set up a nice system so that I could be at home and participate in the council. I did learn something however, which is that everyone rustles around here. All the council members are fidgeting, and it's hard to hear. I don't know what we can do about it, but maybe more directional microphones or something might work. But then again, people do what I just did, which is turn away and look at my fellow council members, and then you can't hear them. So I don't know what the answer is, but it was good enough for me to hear and participate, and I hope folks could hear me. And Mayor Williams was very tactful to ask if I had any comments or whatever occasionally, and that was, and that was good, because I had no way to wave my hand. But anyway, I assume I'll be back, and at least I hope I'll be back every time from now on. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to remind everyone that the Independence Day festivities will be coming up. They're coming much quicker for me as a member of the organizing committee. But I do want to encourage people to think about joining the parade this year with a neighborhood association, entering a, some type of entry in the parade. Have your kids in your neighborhood decorate their bikes and enter the parade, or put up an entry in the parade to draw attention to a specific cause that you'd like to advance. And if you would like to enter something in the parade, please contact me, and we'll make sure it happens. We're also interested in finding some more volunteers to help with the organizing of the festivities that day. We have quite a few people that are helping, but we still could use some more assistance. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'll second that call for participation in the Fourth of July Parade. I have, I did it a few times myself, and it was a lot of fun. So get out there with your neighborhood or your street, whatever, your block, and do something good. I also, I'll, I can kind of commiserate with you, Councilmember Sniffer. My daughter got back from a long bicycle trip a week and a half ago, and she and the guy she was, she's been traveling with, all the way from Guatemala, 3,500 miles on their bicycles, were in West Virginia and on a two-lane road with no shoulder, and there was a beep honk behind them. And Tyson looks around, and there's a woman, an elderly woman in a pickup truck, and they just kept riding snug, hugging the right side. And she came up, clipped him in the back of his bike, the mirror hit him in the elbow, and he tumbled over. She didn't even know it. My daughter went up and stopped her. After a long process, he went to the hospital, had x-rays, he's fine. But it was another example of autos not paying attention to their bicycles, so it hits home. And I, you know, it wasn't anything like the experience you've had, but bicycles have rights, yeah, not even to, bicycles just have rights.
I'm glad to hear that. Oh, okay.
Yeah, me too. And I'll say a couple of words about two environmental events I've been to in the last couple of weeks. One was a Green Party Assembly in Annapolis on the 16th, and the other was a three-day conference downtown at the Washington Hilton last week on local, sustainable, green efforts. Local meaning, in some instances cities, in many instances counties. And there was a real pull, a real push to get the federal government to collaborate, cooperate with counties and cities in particularly in something called an Energy Efficiency Block Grant, which might come to us, although given our recent experiences with the county, I guess we'd have to explore that a little bit. It was put on in part by a group called ICLI, and they have a good number of tools which help communities track their energy use and how they're addressing global warming. I heard some great ideas by others. One was about a task force, a green task force, which has done wonders in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and I encourage us all to think about how we can put some of those things to good use. That's it.
Councilmember Robinson.
I noticed that this seems to be the night of discussing injuries, and I see that the city manager has a brace on her arm.
Yeah.
I just messed up a tendon in my left hand.
You weren't bicycling.
Riding a bicycle.
No. I wish it was a better story, but.
Probably too many maturation's of running Excel models for the budget causes of tendonitis.
Budget injury.
Exactly.
Councilmember Wright.
Three items. One, I want to commend Councilmember Sniffer for his persistence in, even though he wasn't able to be here, but in attending meetings and listening in and contributing in the budget process. And I was recently in New York and realized that if New York City can become a bike-friendly city, I think we can figure out a way to become a bike-friendly city. I was astounded that on most of the avenues now in New York, they've actually created, taken away lanes for traffic and created a bike lane and separate bus lanes separated by an additional sidewalk. It's pretty impressive. So I hope we can, I know we're supposed to look at making speed bumps more friendly for bicycles soon, I hope we can do other things, look at other options in the city. The second has to do with what's now becoming the infamous blue tarp on Cedar Avenue. There's a house that has a blue tarp over its roof, has for about two or three years. And I understand there's not really anything we can cite them for apparently, because that's not part of the code. If they want to have a tarp on their roof, I guess that's okay. The only thing that I've, occurred to me is that a roof has to either be temporary, which means it is for some limited amount of time, or it has to be permanent. And if it's permanent, I suspect that the blue tarp probably doesn't meet the building code standards for the county. So maybe we have an avenue there. If they've actually done an alteration to their house, and they're saying the tarp is now the permanent solution, then I would think that it would have to abide by, it would be, they should have gotten a permit, and there should be some regulations around what type of roof you can put on a house, I would assume, some building standards. So I hope we can investigate that angle. And now to the most serious issue. In my ward, there's been a lot of discussion about the boundary study that the county is doing now as a result of Tacoma Park Elementary School expanding. And first, I would just say that I realize that it's an incredibly personal issue, having two young kids myself. It is, talking about where your kids are going to go to school, what the options are, is probably one of the most significant decisions and conversations that parents have. I know my wife and I have spent probably too many hours discussing this, and it's a decision that parents try to optimize and make the absolute best decision for their kids, even to the extent that people buy houses on certain streets or in certain towns or in certain districts, because they want to go to an exact school. And it's not only about the test scores always, it's about the walkability to that school, it's about the ethos that each school has and the values that their fellow family members have in that school. And it's a very hard and touchy subject. And in some of the proposed options in the boundary study, the county has looked at changing the core school that certain streets or houses would go to. In particular, they're looking at a portion of my ward in North Tacoma where they would eliminate, there are options where they would eliminate those houses from going to Tacoma Park Elementary School, the school that they go to now, which seems very odd to me, because we just, we're in the process of expanding the school. So we're expanding the school, and we're looking at an option that would not allow kids that go there now to go there, and kids that can walk not to go there. Now, I won't profess to be able to choose which option the county should choose, but I do have a few sort of simple criteria, standards, or principles that they should add to the long list of criteria I know they already have. One is, I think that they should not, if it's a kid and a house is currently able to go to a school, there should be a decision, a decision shouldn't remove that house from the school. That would be the first one. And the second principle is that they should make a wider expanded effort to get input from residents. I know they have a process, and I think overall, actually, the process, people have been listened to in the process, but I think they could have been more aggressive in going out and selecting representatives, not just from the PTA to sit on this boundary study, because that automatically, there's people who, if their kids aren't in the school and they're not in the PTA, then they're not, that communication vehicle is not readily there. And then lastly, I want to say, you know, to commend many of the residents who live in my ward, because I think they've taken a very constructive approach around talking to people, seeking out myself and the mayor, and I think other council members as well, talking to their Board of Education elected representative, talking to county council members. And for the most part, that has been very constructive, and I think we're having our voices heard, and we're heading in the right direction. There's a smaller segment of the population or residents that have taken a very combative and adversarial approach. That is their choice, but I commend the people who take a constructive approach, and I think the combative approach is actually risks at this point, turning people who could be your allies against you, including members of the superintendent's staff and the school board. So I know you're going to hear from many residents tonight, constructive residents, and I encourage other people to join with those residents, and let's battle together to get a good solution for all the kids. I would also last say that I think by opening up the process, we can create a structure where, and a way, so that there's not an either/or. And I don't want this to become a battle about who gets to be in the school and who doesn't get to be in the school. I think there are options that we can look at and ways we can structure it so that it's a win-win for everybody. So those are my comments on that, on the boundary study issue.
Okay, and I just have a couple of comments. First, Councilmember Barry has joined us, and I'd just like to remind everybody that this is his last meeting as a member of the Tacoma Park City Council, and he and his family are moving later this week. And we will miss you. We will also have a chance to have you back for a recognition and reception in June. I think it's scheduled for the, I want to say the 22nd. So there will be that opportunity for people to show their appreciation for Councilmember Barry's long service to the residents of Tacoma Park, and we'll have an opportunity to make nice comments then, and just want.
Why not now?
I made a few nice comments. I think it was last week, and then people were saying, well, I'll save them.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The feeling is mutual. I'd like to recognize most of my family who are here tonight, my wife Liz and daughter Alana, and I'd certainly like to thank them for all the Monday nights they've put up with me being gone. Let's see. How's the math here? Six times, fifty-two times six. There are hundreds and hundreds of them, and so I'm very grateful to them for allowing me to do this. It's been a great experience, and we'll have a chance to celebrate for you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Couple other comments, just quick comments that I have on a couple of things. One, I wanted to just say what a wonderful experience I had last Tuesday at Rolling Terrace Elementary School. I was invited to speak at Career Day about the job of being mayor, and I have to say, I had never been to Rolling Terrace Elementary before. And it was a wonderful opportunity to see what a great school it is. I think about, I think about 50% of the school population there is from, comes from, lives in the city of Tacoma Park. And it was just a great chance to spend a good part of a day talking with second and third graders and seeing the level of maturity and interest they had in all kinds of things that were going on, and the chance to help them expand their horizons about the types of possibilities that there are in life. There were, I don't know, probably 20 or 30 people there talking about all kinds of jobs, including somebody who's an opera singer. And when I had a little downtime between talking with groups of kids, I went in the, I don't know whether they call it the cafeteria, the all-purpose room, and got to listen to some wonderful opera, along with a number of kids who then asked great questions and who were kind of following along, and there were, there were a number of rap kindergartners in there having their lunch and listening to opera. And it was just a great opportunity, and I would encourage my colleagues, if you're ever asked to speak or go to Rolling Terrace, it's a wonderful opportunity to see a really great school and some dedicated parents and volunteers and faculty and staff. And I'm sure that all of the other schools in Tacoma Park are equally wonderful, but I had never had the chance to go to Rolling Terrace, and so I became familiar with that And I was wondering if the city manager or the deputy city manager could just let us know what the current schedule is for the RFP, for the auditorium project? I know we've been expecting that things would be moving along, and I know there have been some delays in pursuing information and just a sense of where we are at this point.
Sure. We did get delayed for two purposes. One was to wait for the legislature to make a decision on the program Open Space. While that was happening, we also became aware of the additional $190,000 that Chris Van Hollen's office had made available, and the architects went through a process of looking at some options to using that money to help this be a more green facility or whatever. In that, there became a number, kind of a mini little research project on HVAC systems, and I think that a decision has been made about the kind of chiller that they want to use for this room. That was done with some site visits and structural testing last week. And so if, we talk again with the architect tomorrow. Looks like we should be going out to bid very shortly. It's been a couple of days after that. I don't know the date that this room closes, but I have a feeling that it's going to be sometime in July. It may be that we negotiate something so that you stay through the end of the, until the recess in this room. That's something we're going to be negotiating tomorrow or the next day, I think. And I'll let you know at that point, what that would mean is that the room should be completed by the end of January.
I guess just speaking from my own point of view, if it makes sense because of logistics of getting the azalea room set up for council meetings to move to, and it makes sense to have August to do that, okay, but from my point of view, the sooner the better to get the project going.
Well, that's really been, that's really been the discussion, because I want to move it very, very quickly, and so that's, that's been the discussion with the folks dealing with the azalea room. I think, like I said, we should find out within the next day or two.
I guess, don't delay on my account, or I'll say our account. We'd be happy to move over there in July if it's feasible, just to get the project going.
Appreciate it.
We can meet at my house.
And the cameras get to go right in there, too. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a final item. I just wanted to let folks know that we're going to be putting together a resolution of appreciation to, for Pauline Menace, who died recently, who represented portions of the city in the House of Delegates for a long time. She served for 40 years in the House of Delegates and was represented Tacoma Park for a good bit of that time. We're trying to pull together the information and make sure and make any contacts that we need to, and just let her family know that we really appreciated her work on our And then I just have a couple of additional items about scheduling updates. I just wanted to point out to folks that next Monday, June 1st, we're going to be having a presentation from the group that is putting together the Tacoma Theater Conservancy Project, and that's for the Tacoma Theater in Tacoma, DC. That's an effort that's taking place both in the district and in Maryland. And we'll have work session items on a resolution opposing Historic Preservation Amendment at the Montgomery County Council, an update on the Tacoma Metro development, and a discussion of current liquor license law. And then on two weeks after that, June 15th, we have a tentative item for awarding a contract for the installation of a green roof on the community center deck. And at that point, we're scheduled to begin interviewing applicants for the unexpired term of Councilmember Barry. We have that scheduled for both June 15th and June 22nd. And as I mentioned, the reception to honor Councilmember Barry, and that'll be at 6:30 in the atrium lobby. And also on June 22nd, the tentative lead report on the results of the missing sidewalk study and the ADA compliance plan. And then there will be no meeting on June 29th, because the council will be attending the Maryland Municipal League Convention. So there will be that one-week hiatus, so the next meeting after June 22nd will be July 6th. So that kind of covers some of the highlights and items to be called out for the month of June. Next item on our agenda is public comment, and I think we have a number of people here who might be wanting to make public comments this evening, so I would just remind everybody that these are for items, comments on items not on our regular voting agenda, so if you have any comments to make on any of the regular meeting items, on the tax rate and budget and various ordinances, if you can hold those comments to that point in the meeting. And for those who want to make public comments, please identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes, and we have a timer.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Maggie Sterner. I live in Tacoma Park on Market Drive, and we're here regarding the school boundary issue. MCPS is proposing changes in our school boundaries. If these changes are implemented, current school assignments for our children could change, affecting East Silver Spring Elementary, Tacoma Park Elementary, Piney Branch, Sligo Creek Elementary, Tacoma Park Middle, and Silver Spring International Middle School. The Boundary Committee was formed to propose school boundary options that will alleviate overcrowding in most of the schools in our community. We, as a community, are concerned because none of the options fully recognizes the current Tacoma Park city boundaries. Additionally, Options Four and Option Five would move the North Tacoma Neighborhood Designated TP PB 1B from Tacoma Park Elementary School to East Silver Spring Elementary School. Options Four or Five would also eliminate the choice our neighbors in East Silver Spring, ESS 3, have to attend Tacoma Park schools. We who live here want to stay in our neighborhood schools for several reasons, including but not limited to, our children and families have built strong friendships, social networks, and community ties, and we want to maintain our after-school access to the community center and other recreation programs in Tacoma Park. We want to maintain current geographic boundaries as members of the Tacoma Park community as specified in the criteria designated by the county. We want our neighbors in ESS 3 to continue to have the choice to attend schools in Tacoma Park as they have been doing historically. We want to retain our short walk to the Tacoma Park School where most children walk to school daily, minimizing busing, which is also part of the county's criteria. We picked this neighborhood to live in so our children could attend the Tacoma Park schools. We're deeply concerned about the potential impact the proposed changes will have on the community, and ask for your help in supporting your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Hughes. I live on Tacoma Avenue. I'm also speaking on the boundary items. Following up to what Maggie says, we have a number of actionable items we'd like to see the county, the city council pursue. First of which, we'd like the city council to take a stand and say no to Options Four and Five in the boundary surveys. To support that, I have a petition that we were able to get out in the last couple of days with nearly 100 signatures from neighbors in the Tacoma Park 1B and the surrounding area that would be most greatly affected by this. We'd also like to have the city council ask that they open the process to allow for additional options to the boundary survey prior to the superintendent's report due to be released on October 15th, because once the report is released, there won't be very much time to make a presentation before the Board of Education meets to start voting on this on November 5th. Third, we'd like the city council to ask that the boundaries in the study actually reflect the actual city lines for Tacoma Park. As it stands right now, there are, in addition to the TP 1B neighborhood, there are two other neighborhoods where portions of Tacoma Park are taken out of Tacoma Park and put in the Silver Spring boundaries. Fourth, we'd like the council to ask for demographic information on those communities within the city lines that are suggested that should be moved to Silver Spring schools. And fifth, we'd ask that the council request actual current enrollment figures be reflected in these studies rather than the inaccurate figures that are currently being used.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Cosgrove. I live at 409 Philadelphia Avenue, which is on the other side of Piney Branch, so I'm affected by these boundary issues in Options Four and Five as well. I'm going to read a letter that I wrote to Mayor Williams and to the Tacoma Park City Council. I'm writing to express my discontent at Options Four and Five of the boundary study being conducted by the Montgomery County Public Schools. I live in the TP PB 1B section of the study located on the north side of Philadelphia Ave, between Piney Branch and Tacoma Ave, bordered by the north, bordered on the north by the Silver Spring border. My family and I moved to Tacoma Park about six years ago to be a part of the Tacoma Park community. We felt this community would be a wonderful place for our children to go to school for several reasons. First, we feel there is great diversity in Tacoma Park in terms of race, ethnicity, and sexual orientation. We want our children to learn acceptance of all others, and we want our children to be in an environment where they will be accepted by their peers. We share political and social views with Tacoma Parkers, and we want our children to be raised with these views. Second, we chose our house because it is approximately three blocks from Tacoma Park Elementary School. We are also walking distance from Piney Branch Elementary School and about two blocks from the Tacoma Park Middle School. We would like to continue to be able to walk our children to school and then walk ourselves to the metro. With Options Four and Five, I may have one child attending school in Tacoma Park, one in Silver Spring, which creates a logistical nightmare that involves substantial driving. Third, we are concerned that our housing values may be adversely affected if our school district were to change. We and many in our community- We and many in our community purchased our houses to attend TPEs and PBEs. We were afraid those families who wished to attend those schools would no longer purchase homes in our neighborhood. I am urging you to also consider the natural geographic boundaries of Tacoma Park, as it would make sense for Tacoma Park residents to attend Tacoma Park schools. It makes no sense to displace students currently attending Tacoma Park schools to allow room for other students much farther away to attend. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Connis, and I've lived in Tacoma Park for most of the past 15 years. And I've always tried to be as involved in the community as I can. As you know, I chair one of your advisory, city advisory committees. I'm on the board of directors of a local parenting group. I chose this community 15 years ago as a renter, and ultimately, a few years ago when we were ready to buy, we had been renting in Old Town for many years, and that's really our home. And we wanted to go to school with the families of Old Town. And it turns out then that, you know, we discovered this little section of North Tacoma that I never even knew was North Tacoma before. It's a few blocks, really only affecting a few families, which makes it odd that they can't fit us in. But, you know, we bought a house there, two blocks away from a house in East Silver Spring that cost $40,000 less and was bigger and nicer. So we bought where we bought and took on the Tacoma Park taxes because it was that important for us. The governing documents of the county's paperwork, Grace, come on over here, please. The governing documents governing this county process talk about making sure that there's not cultural displacement in these decisions. And Grace wanted to join us tonight and tell everyone what our family's culture is.
Hippie.
Yes, 15 years ago, when I decided to come to the D.C. area to lobby against unjust laws through a small nonprofit, and I'm still a nonprofit, I cut off my ponytail so I fit in a veteran DC. But I wanted to live in what friends that were telling me in State College, Pennsylvania, even before the internet, they were saying, oh, you love Tacoma Park, it's a hippie town. I Googled terms like granola park, People's Republic of Tacoma Park, and Tacoma Park and hippie, hippie town, hippie enclave. I did about a dozen searches and came up with more than 10,000 hits. We want to go to school with the other hippie families, but we also want to go to school with all the other diverse cultures in Tacoma Park. Hippies generally like diversity. I want to go to school with the Babu's family and the others, immigrant families in Terry's district that you all have taken action to protect in a number of ways. We want to go to school with the gay and lesbian families. You know, I was reading an article just recently, ran a few, a couple of years ago in the Washington Blade, where Bruce was talking about our community and its gay friendliness. And, I mean, you think about it, gay and lesbian families throughout the country are thinking of moving to this area, they're probably going to get a copy of the Blade and, you know, try and get a sense as to where they would be most accepted. And, you know, we want our daughter to be in the same school district with all diverse cultures. Ward Six, unfortunately, the school system divided into two zones, and the zone east of New Hampshire Avenue does not have a representative on the community advisory process. The three representatives from Sligo Creek all live west of New Hampshire Avenue. This was a big issue that I got on videotape at the roundtable community advisory meeting last week, that in terms of trying to come up with creative options, they, we don't know what they want. We don't know if they prefer Sligo Creek, we don't know if they're enthusiastic about coming to Tacoma Park Elementary. We don't know if maybe they're split and there could be a creative option, you know, with some choice. There's all kinds of options that all of these communities could talk about together if we all had a seat at the table. And it's really offensive to me that the east of New Hampshire community doesn't have a seat at the table, just like we don't have a seat at the table. And if we could open up this process and get people like Nina Garfield, who's on it, representing Tacoma Park Elementary, a wonderful consensus builder, to be able to work with everybody, I know, as Josh said, we're going to come up with a win-win situation. That's what we do in Tacoma Park. That's the Tacoma Park spirit that I love. That's what I love about this community. And I would like you to also make sure that if the people from Ward Six all want to come to Tacoma Elementary, that's wonderful. You know, we were looking forward to welcoming them, but we can't welcome them if we're in East Silver Spring Elementary. And in East Silver Spring Elementary, there's nothing wrong with East Silver Spring Elementary. Again, I'm talking about community ties here. The folks in East Silver Spring don't want to get displaced to Sligo Creek. There's all kinds of communities being displaced by this, and none of them are happy with the six options, except for possibly the Ward Four representatives, who, you know, in sympathy to them, were given the difficult task of having to go into another neighborhood and solicit input from, in many cases, non-English-speaking people and so forth. And I think that if Ward Six had a representative at the table to ensure that any creative talking that we might do, that they're represented, and that if they really want to come to Tacoma Elementary, that we make sure that that happens. And, of course, we make sure that we all can continue to stay in our school district. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Abby Grodki, and I'm in Ward Two on Ethan Allen Avenue. And for the last four or so years, I've been a member of the Tacoma Park Community Band, and I'm a French horn player and the webmaster, and email reader. I'm here representing a few of our other members from Tacoma Park. We're not all going to speak because I think you've heard most of our story before, and we don't want to bore you with all the details, but I'll sort of present the opening history and how we got to where we are today. The band was founded in 1974, and we perform regularly at community events, retirement homes, churches, hospitals, local parks. Over the years, we've played for free at various openings of firehouses, children's concerts, community events, the dedication of this new community building, Christmas concerts with the Tacoma Park Singers. We're currently practicing to play in the, for the summer events, the movie theaters, the Outdoor Movie Festival, and the Fourth of July Celebration. We're always available to play for the city and have enjoyed doing so over the years and hope to continue playing. So, over the years, we've had various support from the community. According to band history, sometime in the early 1980s, we were declared the official Tacoma Park Band by that city council at the time. Today, unfortunately, we don't have a copy of that statement, but we, the band members do remember this. In March 2005, the city formerly did recognize 30 years of service of the band at our, recognizing our 30th anniversary. So there has been support over the years of the band. Throughout the years, the band has also been supported in terms of rehearsal space and storage of music. The band used to meet at the school at Piney Branch, on Piney Branch Road, for many years. When it was torn down in October of 1997 and rebuilt, we were moved to the Hefner Center and have been there ever since. In the school on Piney Branch Avenue, we did have space for our music. And in Hefner, we also have had space over the years to house our music, which is very important to us, and Phil, my partner here, will talk about that. Every Monday night, we meet at Hefner and rehearse for all these events that I've talked about. And we have stored our music there, and this is one of our concerns that Phil will talk about. I'll pass it on him.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Friend. I live in Ward Three. Councilman Robinson is my representative, and I play saxophone with the band. I represent a lot of us who could not be here this evening. We'd like to work with the city to find a way to keep our music in our rehearsal space. And we're requesting the continued use of the relatively small three and three-quarters square feet of floor space that our cabinets require. It's important that we keep the music on site during rehearsals, and I'd like to give you a couple of reasons. The first one is that new members come in, we invite everyone to come and play, novices or experienced players, and as new members come in, they may just appear because they've been invited or they have heard about us. And it's very helpful when somebody comes in with an instrument that we have the music available to hand out the pieces to them, and they can participate right there the very first night they come. That was, in fact, exactly the case for me. At my first rehearsal, I went, I put together my horn, somebody lent me a music stand, and a band member went to the music cabinets and got me music to get me started, and I began playing the very first night. Not well, but I began playing and participating. Another reason is occasionally we have missing parts, missing, if a band member does not show up, we are able, if we have the music on site, to go and get additional parts for a piece of music and hand it out to someone else to cover that piece. We have a number of band members who double on instruments. A guy who, you know, someone who plays more than one instrument is then able to get both pieces, and they're able to fill in for a band member who's not there. During rehearsals, we also do need some time to be able to search through the music, make up our minds as to what we're going to be playing, put music back when we're done with pieces, et cetera, and that takes several hours. Finally, there was a time, just fairly recently, our band member, you guys were all talking about injuries, our bandleader, in fact, was struck by an automobile, and he was out of commission for quite some time. That's Thomas Bland. If we had had a case where we had one person, one band member housing the music, and if, for example, the bandleader had been that person, we would have been out of luck. We perhaps would not have been able to play our winter concerts because the music would not have been available to us immediately. He was in the hospital for quite some time. So those are the reasons that we'd like to have the music, and we feel that that is consistent with what we have had from the city for many, many years. And just in wrapping up, the things that we would like are a reliable Monday night space to practice with music on site at no cost, which is something that we have been given for many years, and also better communication with the council and the staff so that we can continue to contribute to the community and play at the various events which we play, the June 13th movie night and the July 4th celebration being two of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just make a suggestion that, I know this issue is wrapped up with a number of things the city staff has been thinking about, and we've talked about having this come before the council in a more significant way. I wonder if we might just have the status quo until we are able to have a conversation about it, instead of, which the status quo, which is allowing the music to stay where it is and them continue to practice in that location till we can have a more full-blown conversation about it. I wonder if that's possible, if my council colleagues would support that.
I see support on the council for that request.
Good evening. My name is Tababu. I'm here in support of Chuck. Chuck called me at midnight yesterday and shared his pain with me, and I sympathize with him. I'll share a couple of personal stories to signify his point. About a month ago, I had an opportunity to acquire a beautiful house up on 16th Street. The seller was highly motivated, and the person I worked with was highly motivated to get me, to help me to acquire it. It was a beautiful house, but the minute I realized it was to leave Tacoma Park, it sent a cold chill up my spine. I just cannot think of moving out of Tacoma Park, basically for its sense of community, the shared common values, and the school system. The school system is more than a school system, actually. Over 70% of my social life is based around my kids, the parents, the social activity. My wife is highly networked with the parents who go to school, to Tacoma Park. Our sense of community on an organic level is established on that basis. And over the weekend, I was in Ocean City. My little girl, who is eight, and she goes to Tacoma Park Elementary School, she loved Ocean City, she was happy. And at one moment, jokingly, I said to her, oh, we can live here, we can move. And her reaction was, no, papi! And I asked why? What about my school, my friends? And the day I had the opportunity to acquire, to get the place in Silver Spring, I came home and I told my wife, we have this golden opportunity to acquire a house up in 16th Street. And her answer was, are you kidding me? I mean, I can understand their pain. And also me, living here, I like that diversity, I like that diversity. I don't want anything to happen to the social, the social, organic base that we've established. So I don't know what you can do, but I shared his pain last night, and I promised to come here and share my personal story. And I hope the city council will hear their voices, and we have behind them. We also want the hippies to stay. I want my kids to go with the kids of the hippie there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Julie Segal. I live in Ward Three, and I just briefly want to associate myself with the comments of Phil Friend and Abby Grodki about the band, and I appreciate the notion of having things stay status quo until we can resolve them. And I just want to add that we really want to work amicably with the council and the city departments to try to resolve this or any other issues that come up with the band. We've really felt like there's sort of been a difficulty in communicating, and we want to work with all of you to make sure that doesn't happen again and resolve this. And we'd just like to be able to put things in writing so everybody knows what we've all agreed to and there are fewer miscommunications. So I just want to thank you for working with us on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Anderson, 520 Philadelphia Avenue, Ward One. I'm here on the school issue, and I'm a parent who's unaffected by this. I can say that I'm unaffected and that my children won't be going to another school, but they are affected from the standpoint of, they've been playing with these children who live literally across the street for years, and all of a sudden, that fabric is going to be essentially ripped apart. It's a very, very difficult issue from the standpoint of just a whole variety of things. There's been talk on the list, sir, about it being an economic issue and so forth, but that's really not what it's all about. It's about a community really kind of being torn apart. One thing that I think is a real challenge for everyone is, the area of North Tacoma that's affected has typically been a place where new families will come in. The houses are a little bit smaller, and people get a foothold in, and those are the people who are going to be basically looking at the schools and so forth. But, I mean, it's a really, really big deal that not only affects the people who are moving, but it affects the people who are just literally right across the street and are going to have to work on this. So I would really ask the city council, it's an easy issue to really kind of brush aside because it's a small group of families that are affected, but it's really bigger than that. I think it's the community as a whole who will be losing out on this. So I just really urge the council to really think about this and realize that it is a big issue. Thank you.
For my own application, how many blocks are you from the elementary school?
Short, you know, it's funny. I'm at 520 Philadelphia Avenue. I'm at the corner of Tacoma and Philadelphia. The people who are affected are actually closer to the school than we are.
And we're only talking three to four blocks, isn't that right?
Essentially. I mean, it's just incredible. The people who are affected by this are literally within eyesight of the school. So it's just, you're talking about 20, 25 families, very small number of people, and yet they're being really kind of shifted and everything. It just doesn't, from a common sense standpoint, make a whole lot of sense. And this is the time where, you know, these are a small number of people in Tacoma Park that really need the help of all of us. So it's not as if, you know, we can look at them and say, they're the people who are affected, we're all affected by this. And I think that's something that we should keep in mind. I mean, you can look at the broader issues, old property values and everything else, but it's really beyond that. It's really kind of about the kids and about what their experiences are going to be. I mean, you're talking about kids who've been playing together for, you know, since they were babies, and then they're, you know, the whole shared school experience, it's a really big deal. So I just hope people take that into account when looking at this and not just look at some of the other stuff that's been going on out there, because, you know, that's really not what it's all about. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
So I'm just going to reiterate the points. I live at 515 Philadelphia, which is one of the, my family's going to be affected. We have a two-year-old and a five-month-old. We have a two-year-old and a five-month-old.
Excuse me, your name is?
Justine Larson.
Thank you.
Yeah. We have a two-year-old and a five-month-old, and we've been really excited about the fact that our daughter, who's two, is going to be going to Tacoma Park Elementary School. I have just very nostalgic memories of when I was a kid, when I could walk to school, when I, it was in Seattle, but now we live in, we moved here because we thought she could walk to school. We moved here right before she was born, and we were very excited about the community and for her to be able to go to school with the kids in the neighborhood and for her to be able to walk to school. We have a lot of really close friends that we've made, all families with little kids, and my daughter has a number of best friends right within three blocks from her. Alex, who lives just a couple of doors down, another two-year-old, and then Edie, a couple of blocks away. We're all going to be split apart by this change, and so we're very upset. And Jay lives right across the street from us, and our friends, our kids are friends, and we get together on the porch and play. So we just are asking to kind of keep the community together and that the council support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a public comment? Okay, if I can just make a comment or two on the various comments that have been made. First, on the school issue, I know that the tendency for the city council is to not want to get involved in school boundary issues, that it's a county issue, but I think that there may be some areas in which we might want to comment, and I think that we can have a discussion about that. I know that there's a meeting tomorrow night at 7:30 at Tacoma Park Middle School, and it's to be, people getting briefed on what the options are and ask any clarifying questions, and then questions can be, or feedback can be given, but only, I guess, only in writing. And then I think the process kind of goes back internally for kind of the summer, for the county process to continue and kind of emerge again in October and with the, with any decision being made by the Board of Education in November. And I know that there's a chance for parents and others to lobby the school board for some options, but I think that the process is fairly, fairly constricted at this point in terms of public input, and so I think that there may be an opportunity for the council to weigh in with a few simple requests. And my sense of it, at least with the information that I've heard so far, is that the county thinks that the current boundaries and therefore the new boundaries of particular blocks of the area that would be potentially moved around don't necessarily reflect the boundary, the boundaries and the communities that the county says is important in the process. So I think one of the things that we could do is ask that the county look at those boundaries and kind of correct some of the small differences that are there where it's like, you know, they say they want to try and keep communities together, and one way of defining community is city residents, and they, I think there's some instances where they kind of include, you know, 95% of the city in a particular block that they define, but they don't have that other little 5%. I know, I think Mississippi is one of those places, Mississippi Avenue and Boston Avenue and potentially maybe Chicago, I'm not sure. But I think we're talking about relatively small numbers, and I think that we can ask the county to kind of follow their own criteria and to look at that information. I know that parents in different areas of the city are worried that some of the potential options would have kids kind of move elementary schools and join up with their friends and colleagues, and then when they get to the middle school level, split back apart again. So I think that kind of any comments that we make would be toward maintaining the sense of community and the real communities with real community boundaries that exist that the county may not reflect in what they're doing. So I think there are a couple of potential areas where we could make some comments that don't get into picking one option over another option, favoring, you know, one block of the city over another block of the city, but just asking for fair, equal treatment for all our residents in the county's process coming forward. And I think we can come up with something that will address that and have that as some input now so that there's a chance for some work to be done on the part of the county and not wait until the fall when it's kind of, they'll say, "Oh, well, it's too late. We've only got a week to turn things around," you know, putting options before the school board or whatever. So I think there's a chance there. And then on the Tacoma Park Band issue, I know that the, since there was a city council resolution that made the band the official Tacoma Park Municipal Band at some point in the past, that was news to me, but that may in fact be the case. That might change something a little bit in terms of the relationship, but I hear the concern that there hasn't been the communication that band members feel there should be on this issue, and I think that the council can look at this. We've had some discussions in the past about community use and free use for kind of grandfathered or legacy groups, and I think that's fairly settled at this point. But I hear the plea to make sure that our relationship is clear, that there's stuff in writing, and that as issues come up like the placement for the music, that things can be worked out amicably and that there's an understanding of the rights and responsibilities for groups so that there isn't this confusion, and I think the council can also try and deal with that. And I'll continue to try and resolve that and work with my colleagues and the city manager to do whatever we need to do to get clarity on that point. So thank you all for your comments, and we will get back to you on both issues. Now maybe we can move to the city manager's comments. If I can just say that the quarterly update that you provided was very helpful, and I thought as I read this that maybe we, is there a way we could get a little bit wider distribution of this information? Because I thought it's really, in many ways, what the city is kind of all about. I'm assuming that it gets posted as part of the meeting.
It's posted as part of the agenda packet.
Right. But I'm wondering if there's a way to identify it somewhere, maybe on the homepage or something that tells people that it's not just a dry quarterly report, but that it really gets at some of the important work that goes on all the time. Because as I read it in detail, I thought, gee, there's a lot here that I didn't know, and it's very interesting. Okay, the first item on our regular meeting agenda is the, tell you what, before I do that, Councilmember Snipper, how are you doing?
I could stand up for a minute.
You could stand up for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We're all going to stand up for a minute.
Yeah.
Get the chance to stretch. Get the kinks out.
And that's always good news, particularly since the coming year, it's going to be pretty tough financially. Thank you.
We're now to the first regular meeting agenda item, which is the second reading ordinance adopting the FY-10 tax rate, and where did they go?
They went on break.
But it was not, it was not, it was not that kind of break. It was a standing break.
I know.
So I guess first I'll ask if anybody would like to introduce the ordinance.
This is the second reading?
Second reading.
Well, sure.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Snipper, second, and by Councilmember Barry. Is there any, that was a quick standing break, it was not a leaving break. Is there any discussion on the ordinance adopting FY-10 tax rate? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just won't go into details since we did talk about this last week, but I am opposed to the new tax rate. Again, I think when we look at the anticipation for next year and the economy, I think that we should be more conservative on our taxes than where we are this year. So I'll be voting against the tax rate.
Councilmember Robinson.
Last year, I was the only one who voted for a tax, a reduction in the tax rate, and I voted for a half cent, and this time we're going with a two and a half cent. So that's a 500% increase in what we ended up last year, increase in the reduction of the rate, which still results in an increase of your taxes. So sorry. But I'm glad that we're headed in this direction, and I'm also concerned about where we'll be next year, as we all should be, or will be, I'm sure. But I'm content with the direction we're going now.
Any other comments? Is there any public comment on the?
We had one, Dan.
Oh, sorry.
I won't go into all my reasons for voting against this tax rate, but I am going to vote against it. I think we could have gone further to shrink the size of the increase.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the second reading ordinance adopting FY-10 tax rate?
Back again, Catherine Gibney, 315 Lincoln. And first of all, I want to thank Mr. Siemens and Mr. Wright Hardley for, not just what you just said, but understood you said this at the last meeting, that you didn't support this particular rate. And one thing I would like to know, because I just can't seem to find it out, is, and I even talked with finance this morning, I was told there was no one there who could give me that computation. In terms of percentage increase of homeowner tax rate, what does 2.5 come to?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well.
I might, maybe I can shed a couple of words that might help. It's a hard number to come up with because some people's rates are going at the full 10% up, some aren't, because they're already, their assessments are already, haven't gone up as much. It's not a, it's not a single increase for every person. It's not, the increase is not going to be the same for every person, either in percentage terms or in real dollars terms. So, but we're going from 60 and a half cents, as I recall, which is our current rate, to 58 cents, and the constant yield is more like 55. So we're about halfway. Then it gets sticky. Well, halfway of what? Full 10% or something less? It won't be any more than 10%. So the maximum increase it could be, unless I got this wrong, would be 5%.
I think it could be more than 10% because if the assessment goes up 10%, but yet our tax rate is going up higher than the constant yield tax rate than an individual who had been in town, owned their house in Tacoma Park.
So the tax, the tax paid can go up more than 10% if the tax rate goes up.
I would defer to those financial experts in the room.
10% is the max.
So the assessment goes up 10%?
The taxable assessed value goes up 10%.
And then the tax rate is applied, though?
So, I'm sure that clarified it for you.
No, it doesn't, but I, maybe I could just say, "Well, I can't figure out how much I'm supposed to pay, so I won't pay anything." I mean, that's sort of how it feels as a taxpayer, not even, no. When you're saying if it goes up, you know, that if my assessment went up this third period, I'm sorry, now I'm totally confused.
There's a cap of 10% on the amount of extra taxes, the increase in taxes you'll pay.
But that's only on owner-occupied housing.
Ah, but it's only on owner-occupied houses.
Right.
And I think that's on the tax assessment, isn't it, not the taxes you pay?
Correct.
So if you don't live in the house that you own here, you don't pay it?
If you don't live in the house, then you're taxed at full value, there's no 10% per year cap.
There's no 10% cap. There's a 10% cap if you live in your home.
Well, I still think it ought to be dropped, and Mr. Siemens, I'm glad he brought it up again. And I should have to say, I mean, I learned a lot these last three meetings I attended, and, you know, I've already started a site called TexturVote Tacoma, which I'm going to start advertising because I think the homeowners here have, you know, paid their fair share of the incredible tax here. And next year, I can imagine what it's going to be like when all the assessments go down. And I want to be prepared, because I didn't feel prepared this year, because hard to understand, blah, blah, blah. So I just want to say that, and I would like to see it go to 1% by, 1 cent, quite frankly.
Just because I think it's unfair if we can't explain someone's taxes to them that they're actually paying, I do think that if you bring your taxes, your tax bill to the finance department and the city manager, someone should be able to explain it to you. I think that's possible.
Well, no, actually, Ms. Gibney, I did pull your tax records off the county online system. The issue, Councilmember Wright, is they have not posted what the assessments are going to be for fiscal year 2010. So I could certainly look at the current assessment of Ms. Gibney's house, but that's not going to be any guarantee on what the assessment's going to be next year. That's done by the county, and we don't have that information. So that's the issue.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the ordinance adopting FY-10 tax rate? Seeing none, it's a second reading ordinance, so it's a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Nay.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Nay.
The ordinance passes five to two. For the next ordinance, that's going to be the adoption of the FY-10 stormwater budget. We'll need to convene the stormwater management board. Would somebody like to move that?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now in session as the stormwater management board. Would somebody like to introduce the second reading ordinance adopting FY-10 stormwater budget?
So moved? Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright. Snipper, second, by Councilmember Wright. Council comments?
I just want to make a council comment.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were pointing to somebody else.
No, no. Just quickly wanted to reiterate that I'm voting in favor of this. This is separate from the other tax rate. It's a special fund associated with stormwater management, and I'm okay with the rate they were charging and the projects we're doing this year.
Okay. If I can just point out that since first reading, there was one change that increased the amount in the budgeted expenses and revenues, and that's because of adding the federal stimulus grant for the Linden Avenue project. Are there any other council comments on the stormwater budget? Is there any public comment on the ordinance adopting FY-10 stormwater budget? Seeing none, second reading ordinance, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And the next item is the second reading ordinance adopting FY-10 budget. Would somebody like to move that ordinance as well?
Move. Second.
I think I heard moved by Councilmember Barry, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Is that right? And this budget has, again, a couple of And this budget has, again, a couple of changes since first reading. It reflects the, the carryover items from the current year and the stimulus funding for the terminal fund, Special Revenue Fund, and the Community Center Fund. All those items have changed. And each of the individual revenue and expense areas in those have changed to reflect the carryovers. Are there any comments on second reading? Any public comment on second reading of the FY-10 budget? Seeing none, it's a second reading ordinance. Will clerk, clerk, please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Nay.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Nay.
That passes five to two. The next item on the agenda is the first reading ordinance amending the City of Tacoma Park Police Employees Retirement Plan by changing service retirement benefits and line of duty disability benefits. And City Manager Matthews, would you like to explain this? And let me first just say that this is not related in any way to the changes that have been discussed in Montgomery County about retirement.
Yes, the city has its own police pension plan. I think as the council probably is aware, going back as far as the last year's budget process, we have, like the county unfortunately, experienced a higher rate of disability in our plan, and that's something that the Retirement Plan Committee or the Board of the Plan has been talking about for some time. In March of '08, the Retirement Plan Committee for the Police Pension Plan did recommend certain amendments to the plan to try and deal with this issue. That amendment was not submitted to the council pending further discussions with Local 400, which is the bargaining unit that represents many of our sworn police officers. The agreement that we had struck with Local 400 about a year ago essentially called for the city and the local to have discussions to try to identify an alternative that would basically be either at the same or less cost to the city, but would also maintain benefits for employees. Most of the options that we looked at focused on either the amendment recommended by the Retirement Plan Committee or LEOPS, which is the state retirement plan for police officers. I think we reached a very painful conclusion that LEOPS was really not a viable option for us at this time, mainly because the state retirement plan has essentially suffered a significant drop in its investment earnings, and also they would not accept any former employees who are in pay status or drawing benefits. So what that would mean for the city is essentially having to come up with money now for the benefits for those who are currently employed, and also find another funding mechanism to continue paying benefits. So what that essentially translates and would have translated into was an effective payroll contribution rate of almost 46%. So while the 34.7 that is included in the budget the council just adopted may not look great. It certainly was more attractive than the alternative that we had before us with LEOPS. So with that, basically, the local and the city, by default, are moving forward with the amendment that was recommended by the Retirement Plan Committee about 15 months ago. Just very briefly, this is described in more detail on the cover sheet, but it would do two things. One would be to change the benefit accrual rate for certain of the sworn officers from 1.5% to 2%. Essentially, the way the plan is structured now, the more tenured employees basically had a more favorable disability benefit than those who were hired later. But for that service that they, years of service before the plan was actually created, they were essentially getting a lower accrual rate, 1.5 as opposed to 2. So what this amendment, if adopted by the council, would do would be provide an accrual rate for service of 2% regardless of when it was earned. So essentially, that would be equal across all employees. And essentially, there would be a change in disability benefits, once again, for those officers who were hired on or before July 1st of 2001. The category of disability benefit that would be impacted by this amendment is those who suffer a non-catastrophic line of duty disability. Right now, they are currently getting 66 and 2/3 of pay for any disability that falls within that category. If this amendment is accepted by the council for that category of disability, they would draw 50% of pay. That would basically create parity between the benefits that someone would get for that category of disability, regardless of when they were hired. So those are basically the two changes that, to the plan, that would be impacted if the council chooses to accept this amendment.
So it's basically two pieces that equalize benefits for all the employees?
That's correct. So it's a benefit, for the group of employees that are impacted, once again, it's just those who are probably more tenured. They pick up something in terms of the benefit accrual rate for their years of service. The flip side of it is their disability benefit for that one category would be reduced.
Are there any questions, comments? Councilmember Snapper?
On the disability part, am I, is this correct, that they would, if they qualify for a non-catastrophic line of duty disability, they can still work in another job? Is there any limitation on what other job they can work?
They have to basically submit to us if they're planning to do that, because obviously, one of the things that we want to watch is to make sure that they're not going to work as a police officer someplace else.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Right. So, yeah, they are required to notify us. We do have also annual certification of their disabilities, that they have to basically prove that they're continuing to be disabled, so.
And that was my call.
Right.
So that, that was picked up, the annual.
Right, we've been doing that. I think that's been a provision of the plan since the very beginning. Is that correct, Karen?
I, I think it's a great idea that they are encouraged and allowed to work, because I think that's a terrific idea. You don't want people, just because they are disabled, to be, you know, discouraged from working. On the other hand, you want to feel that they are, in fact, disabled and can't be police officers again. So that, that part feels very, I'm glad that that's been sort of tuned up.
Other questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? This is a first reading ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is first reading ordinance amending the Home Park Code Title IV, Personnel Section 4.O4.250 to add procedures for salaries above the pay bracket maximum.
Hi, yes, this is kind of a cleanup ordinance. Basically, the procedures that the city's been following and that were required by council ordinance from 1999 were not put into the city code where people would tend to look for that information. And this places that information in the city code in the section Personnel. This covers what happens when somebody's salary is above the maximum of the bracket for the position that they hold. And we usually have a couple people in that category. The procedure that we follow is that the amount above the maximum is paid as a lump sum benefit. It's not part of their base, base pay for retirement purposes. And so that's, that's been our practice. It's been in our ordinances, but it wasn't in the personnel. As we were going through these various things, and a question came up, where I went to look for it, it wasn't there. And we thought, I checked with the city attorneys, and we all felt that she needs.
Questions? Comments? Seems like a good idea to get this word.
Put it where you want to look for it, yeah.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, it's first reading ordinance. Yes?
Is there a motion? I didn't get the motion.
You're right. I don't think there was. Who wants to move this ordinance?
Move. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, seconded by Councilmember Wright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is the first reading ordinance adopting revised FY-09 ASME Pay Plan. Who would like to move the ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Wright. I believe we have two folks who are going to explain this one.
Basically, you have before you an ordinance to implement a revised pay scale for staff covered by a collective bargaining agreement, as we'll be affected June 7th, 2009. As you know, recently, we did a classification and conversation study. It was conducted by Jill Power of Slaver Management, and she made some recommendations. She revised our class spec and revised the pay scales. And before you, you have the pay scale for ASME. You will notice that the general positions are separated from the labor and trades position in two different scales, because the market is quite different. ASME, there are about 91 vacant or filled positions that are covered by the ASME group. 60 will receive increases, increases, 31 will not receive increases based on this revised pay scale.
And just as with last week, with the other ones we were looking at, this one, does it define, it goes from four steps to three?
Before, four steps. Right, there's three steps now before they reach market median, market midpoint versus the previous four steps.
And it changes some of the grades?
Correct.
So that they're not, you can't compare grade 29 to grade 29?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, first reading ordinance, so it's a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
The vote is six to one with Councilmember Siemens voting no. The next item is the single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of replacement vehicle for the Public Works Department and the Public Works Director is here. Who would like to move the ordinance?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Clay.
This item was included in the capital budget for this fiscal year. We've been exploring several options in the interest of bringing on more alternative field vehicles to city fleet vehicles when we have the opportunity. We were very close to recommending an electric car. It's an electric car that's currently being manufactured out of Frederick or assembled variously in Frederick, Maryland through a state contract. However, it has some significant limitations, and it's really created more for a campus-type vehicle or a golf course-type vehicle. It can't go more than 25 miles an hour, and in fact, has a speed reducer, so even down a hill, you can't go more than 25 miles an hour. And we tested it out two different times and collectively came to the conclusion that the limitation in speed would be, wouldn't be an issue for the city, but we do frequently go to other jurisdictions for meetings, to the Rockville in Montgomery County, WSSC. It just, it's our administrative vehicle, so it's a vehicle that's used for non-field-related work. So given that that didn't seem like it was viable, we took a look at, at hybrid cars, which we've had fairly good experience with, and other vehicles in the city fleet, and made the, are making the recommendation to continue with the purchase of a Prius. We have two Priuses currently in the city's fleet. This would be the third. The, the vehicle mileage, miles per gallon, continues to improve with each year that the Prius is in manufacture. Right now, it's about an average of 45 miles per gallon. So it's our recommendation at this point to proceed with that as a replacement vehicle for the public works administration car.
Thanks. Questions, comments? Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for checking into the low-speed vehicles. That was something we discussed last year. And I appreciate your taking the time and taking a look at them, because I think there are applications within the city where those would be appropriate and certainly are better for the environment. Appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Wright?
Just glad that we're purchasing as fuel-efficient vehicle as possible that meets the need, and also thankful that you investigated the option. I know in the coming years, there'll be opportunities to get full-electric vehicles, and I'm sure the city will investigate those as cars come up, and maybe we'll have an opportunity to do that in the future, so thank you.
And maybe vehicles like the Tesla will come down in price.
There you go.
Be an option. Not the current price of about $100,000.
No.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, it's a single reading ordinance. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you to the Public Works Director, and if you can stick around for a second. We're going to take a break, and I've got a question for you. We'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back for our last item, which is a work to second discussion of the Affordable Housing Policy, but actually. Is that whenever Linda Walker is scheduled to make a presentation on affordable housing.
To schedule us last?
The, the, the schedule changes, something happens, the item gets bumped, and she goes away disappointed yet again. So this time, we're here, we're doing it, welcome.
Thank you. Oh, it's good to be back. We're here tonight to review the Affordable Housing Programming and to get council's direction in regard to priorities for the 2010 budget year, given our current resources and staffing. Our budget for FY-10 is approximately $117,500. It includes costs for personnel, that would be 60% of my position. It includes costs for the capacity, the tenant capacity building program and training and workshops that we sponsor throughout the year. There's an additional $115,000 in the Special Revenue Fund for capital projects. And this June, Sarah and I have been talking about applying for a grant under the state's Community Legacy Program. It's the city's opportunity to contribute additional funding to an already developing affordable housing project. And so we've targeted a couple of projects that are in the works right now, and the deadline for filing that is June, at least to get a letter of interest in by June 15th, so we're going to do that.
I'd like to direct you to page two of your packet information. And on this page is a list of the City of Tacoma Park's current affordable housing programs. And this is, these are programs that are sponsored by the city and funded by the city. And what we've done is we've divided it into five different categories: homeownership, rental housing, the preservation of existing housing stock, housing assistance, and educational and outreach programs. On page three are supplemental programs that we use. These are programs that are funded by the county, funded by the state. They have a lot of federal funding attached to them. And so what we do is we incorporate these programs into what we also give the programs on page two. We promote these programs to the residents.
We promote these programs to the residents, and I'm not sure if you all know, but for some reason or another, promoting the affordable housing programs that we have is a lot of work. It takes, you know, a lot of advertising, we do a lot of outreach through the tenant capacity building program. It's not like a recreation program where people feel like, oh gee, I really don't come to this. We have to try to convince the residents that there's something, something to be gained by learning about the programs that we have here in the Affordable Housing Plan. So we do spend a lot of time both in-house and through our capacity building program in promoting these programs. So we have a series of questions that we would like the council to address, and so what I'm briefly going to do is run through the five different categories and tell you what our questions are. The first category, homeownership, as I mentioned, one of our primary programs is the tenant capacity building program. So the question that we have is, does council want to expand this homeownership opportunity by looking into other options like a possibility of a land trust? Does the council want, want to have us add additional programming so that the city has sponsored mortgage financing programs? The county already has a program, but the city could, could also incorporate a program of our own. Under the rental housing category, at recent affordable housing conferences that I've attended, pilots are viewed as a primary means by which small communities like Tacoma Park can lend their support to affordable housing developments. And we've done that in, I think it's about six or seven properties right now, properties owned by Montgomery Housing Partnership and Victory Housing. And so in addition to these pilots and the partnering that we do, because as you probably know, we, when we find that a property is up for sale, if a property is falling into disrepair, what, what we try to do is contact the housing nonprofits to see if they may be interested to purchase the property, to put some pressure on the current owners, to see if they want to sell. That's currently happened in Aspen Court at seventy-four eleven. Aspen Court, the Housing Opportunities Commission has just recently notified us that they are going to be purchasing that third property in that circle there. So that was a big success and something that we're looking forward to. So in addition to the pilots and the partnering that we do with the developers, is the council interested in increasing the role that the city plays in the development of affordable housing by, for instance, purchasing, rehabbing, and managing rental property? Under the preservation of existing housing stock, of course, we have the licensing inspections, our complaint-based inspection program, and we've also recently implemented the vacant property and deteriorating property identification program. What we do in this program is provide information to the owners of these properties about county-sponsored programs. The county has single-family and multifamily loan, low-interest loan programs that are available to the owners, and so we've created some brochures that we send out to the owners of the property in hopes that they'll be interested to maintain the exteriors. Does the council want us to expand on these efforts by providing its own financing and housing rehab programs? Under housing assistance, we've done quite a bit of work with, you know, the Tacoma Park Emergency Assistance Program. I understand that we're going to be getting additional funding for that, which is, which is great because there is so much need out there. And this program, as you know, is, is also run because we have a lot of residents in Tacoma Park that provide their own donations to the program. So we have that. We have the homeowners' property tax rebate program, which is utilized by people who are, have limited incomes, a lot of seniors take advantage of this program. The county has an energy assistance program and rental assistance, the voucher program as well as RAP. So does the council want to continue or expand the city's programming to, to provide direct financial assistance to homeowners and rentals? That is, you know, one of the questions that we have. The last category, educational and outreach program. As you can see, we, we provide a lot of workshops and tenant trainings, landlord trainings. We're going to be doing fair return petition classes starting shortly in June or July. And we've also are going to incorporate post-purchase workshops into the agenda we have here because what we have found is that a lot of people, once they purchase their homes, don't quite have the knowledge to do the budgeting and reserve funding that they need to maintain the, the, the increasing cost that they have for, for the property. So we, we want to institute a program and see how that, that one flies. Our attendance at our first-time homebuyer workshops has been increasing. We had twenty-five attendees at the English-speaking one, and we had seven at a recently held Spanish-speaking first-time homebuyer workshop. So we're really pleased with the attendance. Again, we have to do a lot of outreach to attract people to come to these workshops, but once they come, they are so thrilled at being, at hearing how they, they understand the process of buying a home and, and, you know, they, they feel that it's very much worth it. So in addition to this program, programming, should the city continue it or expand upon it? We're interested to hear your ideas about that. In addition to the questions I've just mentioned, we're also proposing that the council amend the Affordable Housing Policy Statement, which is listed on page one of the packet here. And really what we would like to do is streamline it and make it into one sentence. It's Tacoma Park City Council supports public and private efforts to preserve, protect, and develop quality, sustainable, and affordable homeownership and rental housing opportunities throughout the community for all of its residents. We feel that the spirit of this sentence captures a lot of what was said above. We feel that it streamlines what Tacoma Park would like and that it allows for flexibility in the administration of the programs. So we're looking for your feedback on, on that as well as possibly some answers to the questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll start off with a couple of observations on the proposed policy statement that you just gave us. It looked good to me with the exception of, I didn't particularly like how the word "quality" didn't fit into it.
Would you like livable instead?
Livable? I don't know.
Want to open. Quality is just one of those standard phrases.
Yeah, it just, it just, it just didn't kind of, it stopped the flow of the sentence. I just kept putting on the brakes when I got to it, but I hadn't come up with an alternative.
Habitable. Habitable is one that is used frequently in the housing world as an interchangeable word, quality.
That sounds good.
Okay.
I wanted to make an observation on the, on the top, page seven, on the Single Family Improvement Loan Program. I just wanted to make sure to make my colleagues aware, and I think I have this correct, that the city used to have an old program that was a revolving loan fund for this, and it was funded originally through CDBG dollars, and then we kept recycling them back through as the loan was paid, but because of the accounting problems with tracking that for CDBG funding, that we couldn't do the revolving loan fund anymore. It had to be, because it wasn't, it wasn't easy to track how those old CDB, CDBG dollars came back through, and so it was kind of a, I guess, a grant-tracking nightmare, and so they said, no, you can't do that anymore. So we had a much more robust loan program, and we had to stop doing it that way.
Because the, the county was unhappy, or HUD was unhappy, who was unhappy? Because communities do this all across the country, they have these revolving loan funds.
I don't remember who was unhappy, but somebody was very unhappy.
Yeah, I don't know the whole history of it, because I think it, the program had already ended by the time I started with the city, but I know there's still some, some old loans that we are tracking. I'm just guessing, Councilwoman Clay, that part of the issue may have been with such a small finance staff, there's a lot of administration involved with revolving loan funds. I'm guessing that's what it was, but I'm not positive.
My sense was that we were, we were told by some outside entity that we couldn't do that anymore. And my general comment on each of your questions is, continue what you're doing. I'm not sure I want to see expansion into new areas with big dollar signs attached to it.
What was the last thing you said?
Expansion into areas with big dollar signs attached to it.
What about that?
I didn't want to, I didn't want to start throwing those dollars out.
Oh, okay.
So that was just a general comment in answer to all of your various questions. As we, as you were going through, I thought reluctantly, no, 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 and no, or continue. Councilwoman Clay?
So are you asking us some of these questions because there's money coming up in the CDBG and you, and you want to know what to do with that money beyond what you're doing with existing money? Is that any part of this, or is this just that we're just, it's just time to do the affordable housing? We don't have any more money than we have been expending recently.
No. It's kind of a combination of the two. The Affordable Housing Plan needs to be revisited periodically. The plan that's included as an attachment includes some projects and proposals that if you look at them imply going to the next step as far as actually implementing them, doing a land trust, going through and establishing a mortgage assistance program, things like that, which have an implied cost to them from the staffing level as well as just having the resources available for financing. So it's a little bit of going back and revisiting to make sure that everyone's on the same page as far as the programming that we're able to offer with the resources that we have. And then as the block rent program continues to be available, if, if there are things that you would like us to do that we currently are not doing because of, because we have part of the net and a defined dollar amount, then we can look at the possibility of incorporating those programs into the block rent program or identifying additional resources. Any new programming that you decide that you would like to pursue will be included in future years as we identify the resources. Because right now, we're not in a position to add a new program beginning July first. We just don't have the dollars available. But it would be, this is a five-year plan theoretically, so it would be sort of factored into that with the recognition that you have to identify funding to staff and work to finance.
Okay. So I guess the first one I'd ask about is the tenant capacity building initiative. One of the questions that I've had about this is, is, you know, what they, what they're doing and how they're doing it, and is that the best way to do it? And I asked that question even more after I felt like, when it came up on the agenda, we were, we were lobbied, and I wondered if in fact we had paid people to go out and do advocacy work to lobby around the council. That's what it, that's what it seemed like to me.
They were specifically asking us.
Okay. So, so I think a common way to do this activity is to actually to fund a nonprofit that does this as part of their mission, so that you're expending your money and leveraging their broader resources. So I guess one thing I've wondered is why we don't do that, and is there a, is it because there's not an entity that does that kind of work in the area? So I'm kind of wondering why we're paying these folks kind of a set contract rate when there's probably a wide variety of tenant associations that are looking at the tenant opportunity to purchase activities, and I even wonder if we're going to have a downturn in that in, in our upcoming market for the next few years. And so I guess that's one thing I'd be interested in. And I don't know if you could answer that off the top of your head, but...
Well, the, the capacity building program, they actually perform a few different tasks. One of them is under the tenant opportunity to purchase law, and as you know, there are not that many properties that are up for sale. But one, one project that they've been heavily involved in, less recently, is the, you know, the displacement issue over at Hampshire Towers. There's about fifty families that are going to be displaced from that property in the next couple of months. And so they've been working with the tenant association, kind of bridging the gap between them and the owners, and, you know, kind of, you know, giving some professionalism to the tenant association because they seem to need a lot of guidance in a lot of the issues that they're dealing with. So the same is true for the issues that they've been dealing with at 636 Houston Avenue. This was a property where there were code violations, and they needed a lot of hand-holding in terms of organizing the tenant association and walking them through the process. The, the people that service us through the capacity building program, they, they bring a lot of capacity to, to the program.
Are they associated with some other entity, or are they just individuals that we...
They're two individuals. They, they work full-time over in Manah in DC. You know, it's an affordable house, nonprofit, affordable housing. One of the, Roseanne Look is an attorney. So she brings that to, to the table, although she does not act as an attorney, you know, for us. But she, she oftentimes has the contacts to get pro bono attorney assistance for tenant associations, which we, you know, really need in terms of Hampshire Towers and 636 Houston, when they need to file Colca complaints and go through that process.
Okay.
One of them is Spanish-speaking, and so we absolutely need someone who, who is viable. I think they've been great. They, they really have done a great job in terms of organizing tenant associations just because they want to form a tenant association, not just because of the tenant opportunity to purchase law.
Okay. I, I think that the pilot program is a great way for us to partner with other affordable housing entities and kick in a little bit of money and leverage a lot of money into Tacoma Park. And I think right now, given our financial situation, and also, I mean, some of the opportunities that may be coming along in Tacoma Park as well, that I would really support continuing that particular activity. I think that's a, that's a good deal. This emergency storage assistance that's here, you know, it's always so depressing when I come around the corner at Lincoln, right where Maple is, and I see that the Essex House people have been allowed to put everybody's belongings out onto the curb, which I think is really crappy. And when I, when I lived in California and I worked in housing, you couldn't do that. You were precluded by law from doing that. If somebody moved out of the place and they didn't claim their belongings, you had to move them to storage for thirty days, and then if they didn't claim them within thirty days and pay the storage fee, then you had to sell them, and if, and if what you sold them for was more than the cost, then they, you had to give that back to the tenant. But you couldn't just put all the stuff on the curb and leave it for the city to come and deal with the mess that was created by it. So in addition to the emergency storage assistance, I wonder if we could pass a law or enforce some existing law so that when landlords do that, that we can take actions such that they won't do that again.
Yeah, it, well, obviously, it is the sheriff department that carries out that. We used to have a, you know, kind of a verbal agreement with the sheriff's office that they would let us know when they were going to carry out an eviction in Tacoma Park. It's been many years where they've discontinued that, they will not let us know when they're going to do that. So, I mean, we can, we can try to re-establish contact with someone in the sheriff's office to see... to see, you know, what, how we can find out about it. Because oftentimes the tenant doesn't know that we have this kind of assistance available.
Right.
And they also, tenants are not informed of the day anymore when, when an eviction is going to take place. They just, I mean, for safety reasons, they will not tell the tenant the exact day.
Okay. Well, it'd be great if we could work on that. And, and I think if somebody dumps a bunch, a bunch of trash in the public right of way, the code enforcement officers should come out there and write them the baddest ticket we can write them. Last comment I'm going to make is about the education outreach programs. One of my former constituents was going to have a home buying workshop here, tried to get a space in the community center for, you know, this free workshop that they were going to put on. Had some issues with that. But, you know, it made me wonder why our staff has to do all this work themselves? Do we have other entities that could help? Other, other nonprofit entities or even the landlord associations could help educate the landlords and, and those kinds of things? Do our, do our staff, do you have to take all that on yourself or could we?
No, no.
Could we build some partnerships with, with folks?
LADC, Latino Economic Development Corporation, puts on our first time home buying classes. And they're a hundred approved class, so they do get a certificate which allows them to tap into low-interest loan programs that are sponsored by the state and the county.
Okay.
So, so it is important that we have an entity that, that provides that.
And we do first time home by our fairs too, don't we?
We work with Montgomery Housing, well, Montgomery County in terms of providing the housing fair. The fair unfortunately takes place in Gaithersburg. But, you know, we do a lot of publicity down here regarding...
Okay. Well, so then I guess that's one thing I would like to see us do is actually do a fair here and have our local, our, our folks from around here that work in the community and that really know our community and the different areas and things, help put on the, help put on the fair. I think that would be great. Thank you very much for everything you do.
And just if I can add one thing that I forgot to mention before, that I, I thought it would be helpful, like on the blue sheet where we talked about the fiscal impact, that it's got the budget numbers, but that doesn't really reflect the forgone revenue, the forgone tax revenue from the pilot. And that it would be helpful in, whenever, whenever we kind of look at what the cost of a particular thing is, in this case, the affordable housing policy, that it reflects those other pieces as well. So we get all of that in one place. It was helpful to have the, the 117 and the 115, but any other pieces that can be pulled in there?
Just as an FYI, at this point in time, and this is known on page five, we didn't include it, we didn't think to include it in the financial report. But in FY10, the pilots, the estimated value of the pilots equals $40,339 in reduced property tax revenue.
And that's for all of them?
For all of them in FY10.
And is, is there any one that isn't included because we don't know yet?
No.
These are the ones that you have actually entered into an agreement?
Okay. So that we still have at least one more coming online or did we do that one as well?
This one, this one includes 7610 Maple.
Okay.
It does.
Okay. So that it, it's not going to increase by something as some other agreement comes online?
Unless you approve an agreement.
But, but it would have to be an agreement that we haven't seen yet.
Correct.
And, and the Housing Opportunities Commission has told me that they are not going to be requesting a pilot for the three properties I'm asking for.
Okay. So, so that if we, if we look at this figure, the sense is that if this, this dollar amount and over time that will change as the, the agreements take it to a lesser amount.
This is a pretty good number, in other words.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good number for this year.
Yeah, exactly.
I was just trying to think if it would be affected by not only the amounts going down over time, but if the, the value of, of that, if there's any corresponding number that goes up as the taxes would go up. But I don't think there is. It's just that figure unaffected by anything else.
Right. And it's based on the assessed value for this year. So as the assessed value varies or the tax rate varies, the number will vary. But for right now, based on current property assessments and anticipated taxes, that's what it is.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. This is really excellent. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this. I support the policy, the general policy statement, having that shortened. Habitable, I'm not sure about habitable, but...
I prefer quality, but habitable is the other word to say.
Yeah. I'm a big fan of commas for clarity. And when I read that, I had trouble. So I would suggest a comma after sustainable because I believe that's what you're talking about. It's not a sustainable, a sustainable and affordable homeownership, comma, and rental housing opportunities. It's actually sustainable, comma, and affordable homeownership and rental housing opportunities. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
That the opportunities are both affordable homeownership and rental housing. Yeah, okay. So you do need the comma there. It's, you know, the each shoots and leaves problem that...
I know.
So this one, this one needs the comma. I, like Bruce, I have the same, I, I really support the activities of the housing department, I think. I've, as you know, I've attended some of the workshops. I've been very impressed with them. People I've talked to in the community who have gone, who have attended them have found them very useful. I think there's a lot of good things going on. I would love to spend more money, more money on, on stuff like this, but, you know, maybe in a year or two. So I'm a little hesitant to propose, you know, as Bruce put it, things with big dollar amounts attached to them. That said, I think the keys to a good affordable housing programming in Tacoma Park need to include a very vigorous emphasis on the preservation of existing housing stock, that set of activities. The inspections, the maintenance code, the targeted area stuff, the vacant and deterior- I think those are, those four are the complement to rent stabilization, in my mind. Rent stabilization on one hand and code enforcement on the other. Those two are just, they have to go hand in hand. If you don't have good code enforcement, then your rent stabilization program is just, is going to have problems. You know, I just watch in my own ward, a handful of properties with, I don't know what the politically correct term is, but for landlords who are less adept at managing their properties, I'm trying to think of something nice to say. You know, they just need vigorous code enforcement to keep after them. And I, I really support, and I've been pleased to read the materials from the various landlord activities because in my ward, and I'm sure in other places around the city, there are landlords who just really don't understand how to, how to do this. It's a, it's a very complicated business. It seems simple, but it's really not. You have to have both a short-term and a long-term perspective as a landlord and you have to figure out how to balance that, you know, how to make sure you don't blow all your money in the first year and then have nothing in the later years. And conversely, you know, let the place fall apart in a particular year because you're saving for the long term. So the, I really think the, supporting the landlords is a great thing and I'm very much in favor of the new fair return petition classes. I may sit on that, so I sit in on that so I understand exactly how it works. I hope that we can continue to provide resources on the website because that's relatively inexpensive for some of these material for those folks who can't attend the classes. I, I hope there are, I, I know you've expended a lot of effort in outreach. I hope that can really continue to help folks know their rights, know what the rules are, know that there are resources to help them. Things like the emergency storage assistance, make, help people know that that's available and so on. So I hope we can continue that emphasis. And while I have the microphone, I'll add one other related thing. I was very glad to try out the, my, what is it called? My Tacoma Park question and answer thing. I had a lot of time at home. So I investigated that and I'm glad to see it's up and running. And I even put in a question, see how it works. But I hope, and I, I will start encouraging my constituents who, when they call me, I will say, well, if you'll hold on a second, I'll enter this in the system and so on, see if I can get them to do it as, as well. Because there's a lot of good information all there, all there already. And I like the way you have put in a short, brief answer and then referred them to other resources or a phone number. I think that's a, a great model. Little bit of information and then if you need more, here's where to get it. I think that's a, a great way to go with this stuff. So I'm really happy to see it.
The IT staff and the communications office work very hard on doing that.
I know they have devoted a lot of effort to that and I think it, it shows. It's really quite, you know, of course, I'm a very opinionated person, so I have all kinds of suggestions. But I think really, frankly, it's up and running and, and looking pretty, pretty darn good.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you also for all the work you're doing. Couple thoughts I had. I generally think that in the short term, given what we've committed, there's not drastic changes to what we're doing, you know, are going to make drastic changes to what we're doing. Because I think those additional things do take money, but I do have a couple of comments. One, in terms of the homeownership piece, I think the first question, I think if at any point we do commit any sort of significant subsidies to helping people buy homes, we do have to do it in such a way that a one-time windfall does not just accrue to those people who get to buy the affordable homeownership. So land trust model, as you cited here, is one of the ways to do that. If we're going to look at, if you ever want to look at something seriously related to land trust, they've done a very interesting project around land trust and Martha's Vineyard of all places to provide affordable housing. Because it's very expensive to live on the island, but you actually need service workers and everyday people doing jobs on the island to... So that's one way to do it. There's other ways to limit people's equity appreciation. That'll be my, my first comment. Under this idea of improving and preserving the condition of Tacoma Park, current housing stock providing financial, financing for housing rehabilitation, I'd be more a fan of us connecting people to other sources of capital than providing it ourselves. And particularly now because the interest rates are so low, I think there's, people can access funds. I would like to see a more, as other people have mentioned, a more full accounting of the affordable housing, how much we're spending, mainly because I think we should tout it and get credit for it. So I think you have a lot of it in here. It's kind of sprinkled in, in the different places. But if we kind of combine that all together, and I would also advocate that we actually try and figure out what it costs us to provide the rent stabilization program. And as Councilmember Snipper said, I think there is an additional cost you would pay to do inspection more frequently and agree that inspection, if you're going to have rent stabilization, you can't do that effectively without having the common inspection. It does cost more to do that. We should know what that is. But I also think, I know it might cost something, but I think most rational economists would, would suggest that rent stabilization does result in reduced values for those properties. And I wonder if it might be an interesting project for the urban planning department at University of Maryland, this group of students to try and do. But I, I think again mainly, I think we should continue with our rent stabilization unless we have some alternative that someone puts on the table and has a plan to transfer from what we have now to something else that's more efficient in how, who gets the subsidies. But given that, I think that's unlikely to happen anytime soon. I think we should know and be able to say to the county, we provide this level of affordable housing and include that, included in that as the rent stabilization piece.
Are you also suggesting that there are irrational economists?
There, there are a few of those. Another interesting thing, I, I'd want to understand what our options are if we ever wanted to relax the rent stabilization for certain areas of new development. So one question I have is, when is the last time a new multifamily building was built in Tacoma Park?
There have been a couple proposed, but they have not made it past the community.
Uh, sorry, multifamily rentals? Has anyone even proposed one?
No.
Yeah.
There's...
I would bet, I would bet... No developer will ever propose one.
Doesn't the existing code have a period of time before...
Allows for new construction. So say I wanted to put in a new multifamily property. The rules of rent stabilization would not apply with the exception of the, you can't increase the rent more than once a year for in-place tenants. But they wouldn't establish the baseline rent for a period of five years so that they could work out the operating cost.
Yeah.
So they get to set their own...
Right. I think the issue there is that capital's going to flow where the return is. And so they're going to be frequently comparing that project against a project where there, there isn't that situation. So I don't think it's coincidence that, that hasn't happened in Tacoma Park. So I would be interested to know what the options are for, if we want to have New Hampshire revitalized and we want it to be mixed use and mixed income, I think part of that structure is going to be having some homeownership opportunities in condos, but also some rentals. And I'd just be curious about, is there a way for us to structure to basically say, somebody can develop a new building and if they abide by a set of inclusionary practices where they have, like the county has, where they have to have a certain percentage of varying incomes, is there a way to do that within our rent stabilization structure? Or would that create legal problems where someone could claim, you know, that there was, there wasn't equal treatment under the law? So I, I'd be, I know you don't have to answer it now. I'd just be curious if we are thinking about revitalizing New Hampshire Avenue long-term. I think that's going to be part of the puzzle and I'm going to need to figure it out.
I can tell you that that exists in other places and has been challenged.
Has been challenged?
Has not.
Has not?
Well, not successfully.
Okay.
New York has like three different levels of rent stabilization based on what area you're placing.
Okay. So...
And frankly, right now with the current rent stabilization ordinance, you have this section that allows for exemptions for rent stabilization under certain circumstances. And given the requirements that are at the county right now for workforce housing and for NPVUs and all of that, that the possibility exists for any new mixed income or mixed-use property that provides commercial, with homeownership or rental opportunities and mixed income within that, there is a strong possibility, if they were to enter into a long-term agreement with the county as far as financing or what the rents were, be charged for or what the target population was, they could apply for an exemption for rent stabilization. And that would be, remain in place for as long as the agreement with the county. So there are some ways of accomplishing what you're talking about under the current regulations or the current law.
Good. And then lastly, I know you already are, go to the housing indicator meetings. And so I think since that's something we're funding and there's interesting data associated with that, I think we should continue to work with the housing indicator.
Right. I found the, the meetings very interesting and certainly was glad that they came up with the five indicators and affordability, quality, opportunity, stability and accessibility. And I think that, you know, many of our programs that address these issues. So I was pleased, I definitely want to continue working with that group.
So I was pleased, I definitely want to continue working with that group.
Councilmember Siemens and then Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for being here with us tonight at this hour. I appreciate the work that you've put into this document. I think it's very helpful. Just regarding this discussion tonight about rent stabilization and code enforcement, maybe I'm the irrational council member, but I think that what we've seen in code enforcement and quality of housing inside Tacoma Park and outside of Tacoma Park, where they don't have rent stabilization, it isn't a great deal of difference in the quality of the housing. I think code enforcement is the secret. I would strongly support, you know, the unbiased assessment of the quality of the housing inside Tacoma Park, rental housing inside Tacoma Park and outside of Tacoma Park. But I'm not sure that the University of Maryland would be the ideal organization to do that at this point. I would be interested in hearing, you know, who different organizations might be. I would prefer to get someone who hasn't previously taken a position on rent stabilization either way.
Good. Could you clarify that for me? When you talk about the quality, are you talking about the condition of the properties? Or...
Yes, the conditions of the properties. I think that's been the allegation in the past, is that properties under rent stabilization are not maintained as well as properties that are not under rent stabilization. And I don't know that that's in fact true. And I think anecdotally, if you look at properties in Councilmember Snipper's ward, and then you look at the properties right across Flower Avenue, and I don't see a great deal of difference in the, in the properties, and they don't have rent stabilization on the other side of Flower Avenue. So anyways, that was an aside, based on the discussion here on the dais tonight. The one thing that's not in your document that I would like to see, and I don't have a suggestion on how we go about it, but I think one of the things that troubles me as we watch housing within Tacoma Park is the diminishing number of affordable rental units within the city. And as we see units and buildings being converted to ownership, which is a good thing, I think a great deal of the character of Tacoma Park is based on our provision of affordable rental housing in, within the city. And I can see that diminishing over time. And so I would like us to think about how we can maintain a balance of the rental housing and the homeownership, and especially the affordable rental housing. The storage, emergency storage is valuable, and Councilmember Clay, I appreciate your comments on that. I would like to think that we have a relationship with the managers of the properties, so that the city would be put on notice whenever anyone is about to be evicted. We shouldn't have to depend on the sheriff to let us know that they received an order. The landlords within the city are notifying the sheriffs. So I think they should be able to also let us know, and maybe we need an ordinance so that they are required to let us know.
Well, now that you mention it, I think that possibly adding a small piece to our landlord certification clause would be helpful, because we can certainly tell them that the service exists, the assistance exists for their tenant. Because I'm sure they don't like the fact that they have to put all this stuff out in front of their own property. It doesn't create a good...
Good image, right.
Right, I feel like so.
And I don't want to become...
But that would be good to do that. We can include that.
I don't want to become the storage service de jour of the community.
Right.
But there are situations where people are facing difficult times and need assistance. And I think the management should be able to help us to identify those.
Unfortunately, what happens in those situations as well, just so you know, a tenant oftentimes leaves, and they leave behind things that they, you know, don't want themselves. And so that is like, is put out on the street.
Right. And I realize that the landowners, the property owners are constrained by laws on how they can dispose of that property. Some states have different rules than others. And I think Maryland, I'm not sure that it's open for the legally, a possibility for the landlord to sell the contents at auction. That's a question I can't answer. You have the resources to find out. And then lastly, the fair leads me to think about what, you know, what are the other, you've talked about all these things that keep you busy, and that they are, you know, there are expenses and staff time involved in all of these different things that you do. And I would suggest that we look at maybe some of the ones that are more expensive in people time and in money, and kind of think about the priority, whether those are things that we might want to cut back. And the fair is one that I think has value. But I agree with Councilmember Clay that it would have a much bigger value if it was something we could do here locally. Maybe we could convince the county to hold their fair next year in Tacoma Park. If not, we might be better suited by conducting our own fair.
Just as an aside, before Linda assumed the responsibility for the affordable housing activities, the prior staff person had hosted a number of, conducted a number of affordable housing fairs in Tacoma Park up in the middle school. And because of poor attendance, and which impacted the level of participation of the vendors and things like that, it became, a decision was made internally to do it in partnership with the county. And frankly, it's proven to be invaluable in terms of the relationships that we've been able to develop and the connections that we've been able to make, because of the active role that Linda plays in the planning community. So a lot of the partnerships that we've been able to do have been a direct result of some of that. We will explore the feasibility of doing one here in Tacoma Park, but...
I think the thing...
It's a long ways away. I know that. We debated that at length internally.
Now, they had transportation first, first and second year that I was on the committee, because I asked them about that. And they provided buses that nobody used. So I mean...
They had come apart.
Yeah, they were.
You know, I think the key thing is using your time and resources effectively, and you're in a much better position to judge that than we are when we're at this, this level, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hello. Thank you both for being here. I have a couple little questions, just to clarify. Did you say there are three properties on Aspen Court? Is that what you said? Is that the Aspen Court that's off of Sligo Creek Parkway?
Yes.
And can you briefly describe what those three properties are? They're single fam, are they single-family homes?
No, they're multifamilies, three properties. One is 717 Sligo Creek Parkway. That was a condominium conversion that started possibly six, six years ago now. It, it was a condominium conversion that really didn't work for a number of reasons.
If you go up Aspen and then you take a left?
Left.
Is that, okay, so it's not...
The properties right there.
They share parking lots, right?
Yes, all right. Now I know where it is. Below Russell and Elaine Stone.
So it's still rental and still occupied, and the Housing Opportunities Commission purchased that property. They purchased the property next door to it, that 7423 Aspen Court. And that's, I believe that's 15 units. And they are renovating it, and it will be mixed income rental.
HOC's rep...
Right. It will be exempt from rent stabilization. And then the fourth, the third property, they have not yet closed on yet, but they are close to closing. That's 7411 Aspen, and that's also a 12-unit property.
Will be scheduled with Jesse a time when they can come before the council to provide you with an update on it. Because of the way the city's law is structured and the way the county's law is structured, they more or less need your blessing to step in and participate.
Will those still be under, under rent stabilization?
Once HOC purchases them, they should be exempt because of the conditions that they have on affordability for the units and the income levels of the occupants.
So it's a Section 8 kind of thing, where they subsidize in some way?
My understanding is not going to be Section 8, but it will be exempt from rent stabilization. The current tenants who are living at 717, they all can stay there, and the rents will remain the same, and they'll just be subject to the rent stabilization allowances that we have.
Okay, thanks. Did I hear, to hear you say that there's a way for the, for new construction to not fall under rent stabilization at the county level? In other words, it's the county's decision whether to have a building fall under rent stabilization or not, is new construction? Is that what I heard?
No, it's the, it's your ordinance as far as a way of encouraging new development and recognizing that it does take a while to sort of shake everything out as far as what the costs are specific to Tacoma Park. So the Tacoma Park law specifically says any new construction for multifamily residential rental is exempt from rent stabilization for a period of five years.
I heard that, but I was, I thought I heard you also talk about county and the...
County has other programs which, if applied, and the property owner enters into an agreement with the county, which regulates the rents that are charged and the incomes of the people that are occupying those units. They can apply for an exemption, a further exemption from rent stabilization under the city's law. And that exemption will remain in place for as long as the agreement with the county.
That's the part, that's the part that confused me.
It's similar to, to the MHP properties. It's exactly the same as, you know, because MHP has a contract with the state and the county, because they got financing from them to do the rehab. So it would be very, very similar to that.
And in those cases, it was like a 40-year agreement?
Yeah, yeah.
And like Mike, others of my colleagues, your questions about, do you want to engage in, pursue a land trust, or pursue mortgage financing, or management, development and management of rental properties, or expanding rehab, or direct financial assistance? Because I'm the business plan guy, I want to know, well, what do you mean by that? And how much would it cost us? Or how, what are the relative financial merits and, and assistance merits and pros and cons for all these things? So just asking me, do I support more of these things, doesn't ring my bell unless I have more numbers behind them or more analysis behind them, just to let, to let you know.
And we didn't prepare those numbers because we weren't sure what direction the council would want to take. So any new programming that you propose, or any new directions that you'd like to take, what we would do is go back and do that very thing. What are the advantages and disadvantages of the cost implications?
But it's a chicken, I guess to me, it's a chicken and egg thing. You ask us, do we want to do this? And then if we say yes, then you'll go and tell us, get the numbers together. Whereas for me, unless I know what the numbers are first, I'm not going to say yes. So just FYI. You can't get me to say, oh, I want more of that, unless I know how much it costs. The, to Terry's point about what we really need is more affordable units, there's a way we can do it. It's called accessory apartments. And I don't see in here any promotion of those. I, I live in a house where there's an accessory apartment, but I don't own it, because we have a co-owner of our house, it gets complicated. But we've lived next to an accessory apartment for 23 years, and it's been a great experience. We've gotten great friends. It's always, it's typically been very affordable for people, and we've had a variety of people in it. And our neighbors don't complain, and they make friends on the street. And I could go on and on about the benefits of an accessory apartment. So I encourage you to, to find ways to promote more accessory apartments in Tacoma Park. And I know there are only 180 or something in the whole county, and that we have, you know, a third of them already. But that doesn't mean that we can't have more. And I don't, I don't, I think it means that we can provide a great deal of good, affordable housing that provides more income for people who, who need more income to pay for our enhanced property taxes. So it's, there's a lot of pros to that, that little scenario.
Three or four years ago, the county did propose streamlining the accessory apartment application process, and there was such a backlash from the neighborhoods.
From our neighborhoods, or?
Not, not so springy.
No, I think, I know, I know, I know.
And, you know, some neighborhoods, I was at a meeting, and I mean, the person who came to speak about it almost had to, you know, leap under attack, because it is a very controversial issue. But they, you know, we can certainly see if they are going to be, you know, proposing that again. Because I know they're, I mean, I think they feel that there's a need for more affordable housing units too. And, and that was maybe presented before its time, you know?
Yes.
Like maybe now is the time to do that. I don't know.
Right. Maybe a good case could be made for it now, a better case. Also, to have us, this is another instance, this raises my hackles too. To have us, to have something that we want be held hostage by something that people up county want or don't want, that rankles me. You know, we have our own housing policy, we have our own affordable housing policy, we have rest stabilization, the rest of the county doesn't. But when it comes to enhancing our affordable housing policy, or the, our affordable housing stock, oh no, we can't do that because the people in the rest of the county don't want it. And that's wrong.
Is this another zoning question?
Yeah.
It's kind of zoning, I don't know. And we have, there's overlays, there's overlays, the park and planning is very happy to offer us overlay situations in our commercial districts, for example, that don't have to be subject to the zoning requirements of the rest of the county. They've offered that to us a number of times. But this is an instance where, oh no, you can't have your own accessory apartment overlay zone. Well, can't we? Maybe you could pursue that. Particularly if we don't have the resistance to it that the rest of the county has. That's the point I'm trying to make. The last, the last point I'll make is that when I went to the Hickley, which is, I don't even remember what that stands for, but it's the International...
International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives.
Thank you, thank you. Local environmental initiatives. And I was there, but they talked about the energy efficiency block grant programs, which are cycling through the federal government right now. And they were very aggressive in trying to put those block grant programs into place on a permanent basis. And some of the ideas I heard had either mortgage buy downs of the interest rate in order to get a little more principal if you got a commitment to retrofitting your home, so that in the end, the amount of money that the government spent would be leveraged and paid back very quickly by the additional work that was being done by people in the community. And the energy bills are lowered, and the mortgage rates are, the mortgage bills are lowered because of the rate gets lowered. So it all worked out really well in their little models. Basically, the local government tries to get matching funds, buys down interest rates on existing mortgages by a point or two to a low level. That reduces the, let's say your mortgage is 1,500, maybe it gets down to 1,100. And at the same time, you reduce your energy costs by maybe 100 or 150 dollars. So the homeowner is in a much better situation. Yes, they've added 20 to 30 thousand dollars in principal, but over the course of the loan, they pay less anyway. And, and you get a lot of local employment, and you have less energy used in the houses. It was very attractive, and it was very well received during the, during the conference. There are some models. Roger Berliner is touting one that's sort of like that, but doesn't, has some changes. And that came from something in Babylon, New York on Long Island, called Green Homes. I have a... I have a flyer for it that I got at the ICLI conference. I'm glad to share with you. But I, I, that seemed very attractive to me, those models that were presented there. So I encourage you also to look at those. But keep up the good work. Thank you.
And I can, I can go you one better on that acronym, because it used to be ICLI, U.S. CCPC, which was Cities for Climate Protection Campaign.
Now it's the city, the climate communities, or there's a, now there's a climate cities thing that goes a lot of, a lot of ladders.
Thank you all very much. It's been very helpful that you get what you need in terms of direction from the council.
What we will do is, not to torture you much longer, but we'll go through and we'll make the appropriate revisions to the affordable housing plan policy, and then bring that back to you for adoption.
Okay.
It'll be significantly shorter than what you have.
Good. We look forward to that. Before we leave, Councilmember Siemens has something.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I've been very disappointed tonight with Councilmember Barry. He's made it through the entire meeting without saying anything about any of the items, and I think that he's leaving us all in bad light. We're going to miss you, Doug, and I hope you'll be back for the reception so we can really say all those nice things about what you've been holding back on.
Looking forward to it. Mayor, may I gavel the meeting to a close?
Sure.
We are adjourned.
There you go.